We can reconvene our meeting to open session. The board has been in executive session since six ten to discuss a BCUEA contractual matter and a confidential legal matter. We could start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
One nation.
Under God.
indivis- with liberty and justice for all. To make it easier, I'll go back to, I'll introduce everybody. For the board with us tonight, we have Chris Meyer, Willow Bear, Jonathan Fishbein, Christine Beck, Meredith Moriarty, Wendy Sampson, myself, Holly Dellenbaum. We also have Jody Monroe, Dave Hurst, Judy Kehoe, and Kathy Johnston. And just a reminder to everybody, now that we're back on Zoom, if you are not speaking, if you can try to would help with audio feedback during the meeting. First on the agenda is the approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the November fourth, twenty twenty, regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries? Next up is our superintendent's report. Thank you. So I wanted to take a minute to thank everyone for, we've made it through the first quarter of the school year. We just finished up the first ten weeks. And Dave Hurst will do the academic report a little later on in the meeting, but I really wanted to thank all of the staff and the students and the families for their support. I had three parent meetings in the last couple of weeks. We had, I think, about a total of, I don't know, two hundred and fifty or so plus attendees. People asked some great questions. They were very informative and, I think, very supportive of our schools. So I just want to thank everyone for the support during these pretty challenging times, but hopefully will continue. And again, I just wanted to do a thank you to everyone for all the flexibility and support during the first ten weeks. I did also want to turn it over to Judy Kehoe to talk about some of what people have seen recently. I know it's been on the news about transportation aid and withholding transportation aid from districts from the closure last year and where that stands. So I'm going to turn it over to her to just talk about that process and potentially what the impact is to Bethlehem if that aid is to be withheld.
So the discussion right now is that the state would not be willing to allow those salaries paid to staff during the shutdown, starting in mid-March. They wouldn't allow that to be eligible for our transportation reimbursement. We get about two-thirds of our eligible costs back to us in state aid. We took a look at the salaries that were paid to staff in that March fifteenth through May first timeline, and then applied the aid percentage to that. So if this proposal is in fact approved, it would mean about a four hundred thousand dollar reduction. If it's extended from May first and another seven weeks or so through the end of June and the academic year, then it could be as high as seven, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in aid. There's been quite an outcry from the school community about those proposed aid reductions because we really were essentially encouraged at the state level to maintain those salary payments. And it was very difficult to not make them when we were looking at an every-two-week-or-so decision on could we remain open. So there is quite an objection to this proposal. We hope to have a decision on it within the coming weeks, but for now, we're just waiting to hear and anticipating that it could be a significant reduction.
Thank you, Judy. And then the last thing that I wanted to just comment on is there's been a lot of questions or emails, calls about if our schools are going to remain open during the holidays. And our plan is to remain open. We feel that we have, you know, done a good job of keeping our schools safe. And we believe that having our kids here in person is extremely valuable. So that is our plan. So just to reiterate that for those who are wondering if our plan is to close at all, our plan is to remain open at this time. And hopefully, we'll get through the holidays and everyone is safe and cautious and our schools can stay open. So that's it. That's my superintendent's report for this week. Thanks, Jody. Next up is the board report. And I did not have much myself tonight, but I did, I had been thinking a lot about, you know, Thanksgiving is obviously coming up next week. And I know there's been a lot of talk in our schools about things that we are thankful for and things that we are grateful for. And I just wanted to say that, in the spirit of things, I am so grateful for our administration and our staff and our teachers for all of the work that everybody has been doing to keep our schools open. It is not easy, but it is recognized. I'm also wanted to say that I'm grateful for the creativity that a lot of our teachers have shown in continuing some of our co-curriculars virtually and being able to make those happen for kids because I know those are important. And also to our parent organizations, our PTOs, our PTAs. I keep seeing some of the creative ways that they're really working to continue to build community in the schools and to maintain some of the traditions that are really important to the students, whether it's, you know, moving a craft fair online and a book fair on, to at the middle school. I know they've been getting people to do after-school programs virtually. And all those things are important, and I just wanted to recognize them. And if anybody else has something that they would like to share, now's the time.
On the, following up on the theme of what we're thankful for, I was thankful this past weekend that the cross-country team was doing a fundraiser and they were raking yards. So they did mine. And not only did they do a fine job, but I'm hoping that they decided to do a fundraiser for the spring cleanup. It's a great idea. They were socially distanced. They were very responsible. They were all wearing masks. And Mr. Rickard did a great job of marshaling his forces. So compliments to them and for the great idea. And hopefully, we'll see it again.
Anybody else?
Just kind of on the gratefulness theme that you started off is just for our school community to make sure that with the time off next week and through the Thanksgiving holidays, that everybody takes time for self-care with themselves and downtime. I know the teacher's desperately needed. I'm sure Jody and Dave desperately need it and try to rejuvenate because of the tough times that we're currently in. So do something that makes you happy that is not school-related.
Definitely. Next up on our agenda is our presentation this evening. And we have a presentation on our academic update by Dave Hurst.
Okay, thank you. So this academic update is clearly going to be unlike any other in that we certainly didn't have the same type of testing scenario we typically have that I report out on. But nonetheless, I do want to report on many of the great things that have been happening in our district academically and just sort of in building a sense of community again. So let's just kind of take a walk back to what happened in the spring. Right, it's sort of like in the blink of an eye, all of a sudden, you know, Friday came and we were basically told, you know, by Monday, schools are going to be closed. And then teachers and administrators, we were all sort of scrambling to put together plans to ensure that we could provide a continuity of instruction for our students. And then the governor, you know, on that Monday, decided that, you know, by Wednesday, all schools across the state were to close. And initially, if you recall, it was at two-week increments, but, you know, it ended up being for the remainder of the school year. So, you know, teachers were basically thrust into, and students were thrust into situations that they were not necessarily prepared for. They certainly weren't familiar with. And we learned quite a few lessons along the way that we were able to use over the summer to better prepare for this school year. So some of the things that we learned is, you know, remote instruction competencies certainly differ from those when you're in an in-person brick-and-mortar setting. First off, you know, you have to have technology skills to be able to pull this off. There are definitely more planning, designing, and working strategies in that incorporate more active learning, interaction, participation, collaboration. It, you know, doesn't work exactly the same way as it would in an in-person setting. You know, you have to increase your amount of feedback through various means be caught and provide clear expectations because, again, you don't have that daily face-to-face contact with the students where in the past, you would just, as kids were walking into the room, you'd have quick little conversations with them. Or you'd see them in the hall, you'd have quick little conversations with them. You know, all of those opportunities were lost. Certainly, trying to be responsive to students with special needs is much more challenging in an online setting. And then finally, and this is something that we're still struggling with in the colleges, for that matter, are still struggling with, is how do you create valid and reliable assessments in an online environment? So those are all things that we kind of learned rather quickly in the spring. And those are things that really drove our summer work that I'll talk to in a few moments. But first, I do want to talk about, there were some assessments. So as, yes, the state canceled, you know, the traditional three-through-eight ELA assessments, the math assessments, the science assessment. All of our E&amp;L assessments were canceled, special education alternative assessments, reagents exams, ACT, SAT. These were all canceled. But, you know, AP did move on in an alternative format. They were, certainly did not look like a traditional AP exam. They were much, much shorter. They were delivered online. We did have some students with technical issues, but even through all of that, our students performed quite well. You can see that, you know, looking at the last five years, the number of AP students did drop. And that was due to, some students did decide not to take the exams. We did allow for that. And some students, unfortunately, because of technical reasons, their exams were unable to be validated. But if you look back, our numbers basically are essentially where they were back in 2016. So still very, very good results, given the unique and challenging circumstances, for sure. I do want to point out too, I like to highlight this every year, is so-called Equity and Excellence Index. We are typically the highest-rated suburban school in this area in that almost half of our seniors graduate having earned, scored at least a three on one AP exam. And you can see that, you know, in any given year, the percentage of students scoring three or higher is, you know, remarkable. To have, you know, almost, you know, almost a quarter of your sophomore class taking and receiving AP credit is truly a testament to, you know, the dedication of our students and, you know, the quality of our programs. So again, here you can see our performance last year. While typically, we do have, typically have higher percentages of scores of the five range, some of those kind of dipped into the fours and some of our fours dipped into threes. Overall, we're still, you know, at that eighty-eight to ninety percent proficiency rate that we're accustomed to seeing. We did, we were able to celebrate a class of 2020, albeit in a non-traditional fashion. Unfortunately, you know, I do believe we were able to give the students, you know, as proper a send-off as could be expected under such challenging circumstances. Our graduation rate was about ninety-five percent. And the breakdown of, you know, local diplomas, regents diplomas with and without advanced designation and so forth are consistent with what we've had the last few years. Again, a special note is, you know, two-thirds of our students graduating with the advanced designation, again, just goes to show the dedication that our students have and the strength of our programming. You know, one highlight there is, if you recall, we added the two-year stretch program for Algebra II, which is now capturing about anywhere between eighty and a hundred students that traditionally would have only ended up with a traditional regents diploma, whereas now they're getting the advanced designation. So as I said, lessons learned in the spring definitely contributed to what we did over the summer. We were very fortunate in that we were able to run the extended school year program, albeit looked a little bit different than typical. And I'm actually going to have Kathy speak just for a few seconds on how that went, and then I'll jump back in and talk about the academic recovery program and professional development. So Kathy, go ahead.
Sure. So as Dave mentioned, we were able to, in a pretty short period of time, pull together our ESY program. And we made the decision at the onset that we would only do a three-hour program for the summer. We typically had had a two-and-a-half and a five-and-a-half-hour program. You know, the very first day of school, the kids got off the bus. This is the first group of kids that were wearing masks and they were wearing them in all different places. But very quickly, they learned what to do and they were so happy to be at school. And it was a terrific six weeks. The kids learned a lot. And we learned a lot from them about resiliency and what kids are able to do. Our greatest takeaway is, I surveyed all the staff at the end of it, is that we're going to continue with a three-hour program moving forward. Kids got in, they did what they needed to do. It worked beautifully. And then they went on to the rest of their day and were able to do some other things. So all in all, it was a terrific summer and a great learning opportunity for us for the future.
Thank you, Kathy. So we also were able to run what we termed an academic recovery program. As you know, schools that we typically send students to for summer school were not in existence last summer. So we ran what we referred to as an academic recovery program. It was fully online. We had two teachers working with middle school students. And we had ten teachers working with high school students. And all in all, we had nine different courses for which students were able to recover credit from at the middle school. And fifty courses where students were able to recover credit at the high school. And these numbers at the middle school, that was pretty much all of the credits that were, needed to be recovered. At the high school, that represented about two-thirds of the courses that needed to be recovered or classes. Some students opted not to because they were elective courses that weren't needed for graduation or they were courses that they decided they preferred to just repeat the course in that they felt, you know, spending a whole nother year in the course should be more beneficial than trying to just get through it over the summer as that could, you know, impact their performance in follow-up courses. But we were very happy with the participation. And it was, it was great to see students that didn't necessarily engage with their teachers during the spring actually engaged quite well in the smaller group setting over the summer. And then in terms of professional development and curriculum writing, you know, I did touch on this when I talked about lessons learned from the spring. We really ramped up our professional development and curriculum writing efforts over the summer. We spent a lot of time working on the areas of assessment, cultural proficiency, feedback and grading, online teaching and learning, prioritized curriculum and technology. So these are all areas that teachers spent time over the summer working on. And there was a lot of collaboration over the summer. You know, obviously, we had the logistical challenges and everything had to be done virtually. But teachers were able to put in a lot of hours in terms of, you know, improving their craft and improving curriculum for students. So the preparation over the summer, you know, leads us into the fall. And, you know, I'm very excited to talk about the Virtual Learning Academy, which is our K-five remote learning option. I have a sample schedule up there. This is our third grade schedule. Essentially, the way the program works is, you know, the students are broken up into smaller pods so that throughout the day, we can have a mix of both small group and large group instruction within those pods. And I want to highlight, you know, based on the success of this model, this is what remote learning will look like should K-five be forced to go into a remote setting due to school closures or even due to a classroom being quarantined. So, you know, the experience that students and parents had and saw back in March, that is not the experience that we would, they would have should we be forced to go to a remote learning this time around. There would be a full day of academic activities and breaks built in from nine to three. And, you know, it'll be much, much more engaging in terms of the synchronous piece, whereas in March, if you recall, much of what was done was more of the asynchronous nature. So we're very happy that the Virtual Learning Academy is proving to be successful and it's proved to be a model that we can use for all of K-five should we be forced to go into a remote learning setting. At the secondary level, here's kind of a sneak peek into some of our classrooms. You can see that, you know, teachers are using their large boards to interact with the students in the classroom. In the second and third picture, you can also see the students at home. So the class is able to, you know, in the first slide, you can see it stood, the teacher has the whole screens filled up with the whiteboard because they're doing some presenting. You know, the middle screen, you can kind of have a mix where you can still see the students and the presentation because the teacher doesn't need the full board to be writing. And then the third one is more of like a seminar style. So all the teach, all the students at home can see the students in the classroom. And we're finding that this is working quite well. Fortunately, because this is the model that the students are used to on an every-other-day basis, either being at home or in school, when we are required to go full remote, students will already be used to this model and it really won't be much of a change for them other than the fact that they won't have the opportunity to come in on an every-other-day basis. One of the concerns I know that was raised in the spring was especially for K-five was, you know, this idea of learning loss due to the fact that, you know, students weren't in school. They were receiving this instruction online. Fortunately, we do test three times a year with iReady for, in both math and reading. Again, although it's, you know, no assessment system is perfect. We do have years worth, three years worth of data now where we can make comparisons. And you can see that this year, there really isn't, on average, a drastic shift from the prior years. I do, I want to kind of caution, you know, you look at it and you say, wow, there's a lot of kids one grade level below. But remember, when you're taking an assessment in September, it's, if you're a fifth grader taking an assessment in September, it's measuring where you are in relation to the fifth-grade standards at the end of the year. So in theory, if you're one grade below in September, that's exactly where you should be, right? So that's not something to be concerned with. And we saw the same pattern in reading. You can see that the, from, you know, two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year through fall twenty twenty-one school year, very, very similar results. So on average, our students are performing on these assessments now as they would have historically. So there does not appear to be, again, on average, learning loss. Individual students, again, that's where teachers are taking the time to dig in to the individual student data to identify students that are in need, which that actually ties nicely into the next part of the presentation, which deals with response to intervention at the K-five level. So as you're well aware, all of our RTI math teachers have been pulled because we're using them as classroom teachers so that we could fit all the students in on a daily basis. So for that reason, there's no formal meaning pull-out RTI math services this year. Classroom teachers are going to be providing that support. And that support looks like we're going to utilize iReady as that is able to pinpoint students' gaps in their learning and will create customized lesson paths for them. We're also using something called Reflex Math, which is more of a skills fluency-based program. And then the teachers are providing individual support with the current topics. And as they provide this support, you know, they're going to be checking completion of these items. They're going to be tracking these supports and intervention in a program we have called Intervention Compass, which allows us to keep track of student data. And all teachers that work with these students have access to that data and it moves with them from year to year. So we're able to do a much better job of progress monitoring. We're also using iReady growth monitoring assessments this year for the first time. And these are sort of short temperature checks that you take between the diagnostics. And this, what this does is this enables us to determine whether or not the interventions that the teachers are using are working. Reading, we do have support in reading still. Each building has one reading teacher. And classroom teachers are also providing support. So for Tier One, these students are very similar to math. They're going to be receiving the bulk of their instruction and support through their classroom teacher. Tier Two will receive some pull-out services two to three times a week. And we are prioritizing grades one, two, and three as we all know that, you know, early intervention is key, especially with reading. And then Tier Three, very similar to Tier Two except for those students are being pulled out three to four times a week as opposed to two to three. And we're going to be progress monitoring Tier Three kids with an additional assessment on top of the iReady growth monitoring, something called EZCBM. And actually, before I get to questions, I'll just say, you know, in grades six through twelve, while we don't have any formal mechanisms such as iReady to monitor student progress, grades six through eight, we do. But grades nine through twelve, we certainly don't. You know, teachers are, again, consistently monitoring their students. They've been wonderful at checking in with teachers that taught the courses that preceded them to determine, you know, what were the essential content areas, what were the essential standards that they taught? What are some things that they traditionally might have done that they left out because they weren't necessarily critical standards? And really, again, looking to be flexible in the way we assess students this year, the way we grade students this year. Those are all focuses as we move forward. So with that, I will open it up for questions.
Dave, will the, the growth assessments be provided to parents? Or is that solely for use by the teachers in the classroom?
Yeah, those don't, they, those do not come with parent reports. Those are more, the teacher gets more of a spreadsheet view than individual student reports. It's really, again, meant to just be a quick temperatures check to see if students are, you know, sort of gradually improving since the benchmark. Keep in mind that they're not, you know, we call, we consider them temperature checks because they can't be as accurate as a diagnostic. They only last about twenty to thirty minutes, so they're shorter in nature. So it basically takes where the student left off on the diagnostic, asks a few follow-up questions, and then tries to determine, you know, whether, it's really just trying to determine whether they're still on the correct trajectory to reach their growth goals. So it's not nearly as detailed of a report as you would get from a diagnostic.
I have, sorry, I have a question for you. Sorry, did you, Colley, were you done or no?
No. I'm going to stop sharing because I can't see anyone, so.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask if anybody had some questions.
Oh, super. I have a question. Good timing. So I know, you don't have the data yet, probably, but are we tracking how kids are doing who are hybrid versus the kids that are fully remote? Because I'd be very curious to see how that data plays out.
In terms of the iReady assessment?
Well, I'm talking about more the seven, the six-twelve level. You know, are the kids that are home a hundred percent, are they achieving at the same level of the kids that are hybrid? Are we seeing any concerns? Because, you know, I want to make sure that these kids that are home didn't choose home because, you know, they're trying to get away with something. I know a lot of kids are home for solid medical reasons. And I get it, I understand why they're, why they're home. But I'm just worried that some of the kids that chose to stay home might fall further behind.
Yeah, so, I mean, we are aware of the students that are struggling that are full remote, and our counselors have been reaching out to encourage those that are not staying home for safety reasons to come into school. And we've actually been able to talk some into coming back. Once report cards are released, obviously, we'll have more solid data and we can easily run reports to compare students that are hybrid versus students that are full remote. But you raise a good point. Some students that chose to go full remote. Um, but you raise a good point, some students that chose to go full remote, you know, didn't so, necessarily do so with the um, with simply safety in mind, right? So um, counselors are doing, really monitoring those students, especially those that we knew um, sort of disengaged last spring. Um, and are, are working with them. One of the things we are doing at the middle and high school is um, we have one of our librarians that's going to begin um, starting next week, checking in with kids on a regular basis that are struggling. Um, sort of just to check in, make sure that they're able to access their work, making sure that they're keeping up with their work, that they're communicating with their teachers. Um, so sort of a um, mini grow program, if you will, for grade six through twelve, outside the formal structure of what we have at the middle school.
Yeah.
Is that for all?
Sorry, go, please, Steve.
Six, twelve.
Is that for all students, not just remote? It's for hybrid and remote?
It's for kids, it's, well, it's mostly going to be the ones that are remote, full remote, but it could bleed into some students that are, you know, obviously, limited capacity, it, it'll depend on how many students end up on the list, for sure.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna make clarify that, I think I said it poorly. I know there are people out there who chose remote for very solid reasons, I want that to be clear, like, I, I'm not, I get that, I just wanted to say that I, I am worried because I know there are kids, I'm a teacher that had kids last March that when we, when we went virtual, like, just fell off the face of the earth. You know, and I'm worried that they chose remote again and some of those same kids are going to fall off the face of the earth, so when we do come back, whenever that is, they are not a year to a year and a half behind everybody else, that's, that's my concern.
No, and, and Chris, we've had some students come back that said, you know, I, I, I chose fully remote because it was the convenient thing to do, right? And I quickly learned that it wasn't working well for me, so I'm coming back. So you know, your point is not mistaken, yeah.
So, but is it a fair comparison, though, curriculum-wise, to compare um, the hybrid model to remote because they are completely different? The curriculum delivered might be a little bit um, different just because it's all remote.
Are you talking K five or six, twelve?
I'm talking any curriculum delivered, well, if you have remote versus hybrid or in-person, it's going to be different.
Well, let me start, let me start with six, twelve. Six, twelve is absolutely not different because.
They're going hybrid.
It's, well, it's live stream, so it doesn't matter if you're in school every other day or not at all, you're receiving the same exact lesson as either way, because it's teachers are live streaming. K five, we have, and that's one of the reasons we chose the model we did for K five, we have the dedicated Virtual Learning Academy where um, they are delivering the same curriculum as the classrooms, knowing that, so we just had thirty-something students go back to the classrooms. We had to have them in the same um, place so that they'd be able to transition back. Um, it actually, it turns out, and some of the students were finding, um, the Virtual Learning Academy actually got a little further ahead than the in-person students, um, so they're going back and having to repeat some lessons. Um, which isn't a bad thing, but um, you know, the way the Virtual Academy is running with, you know, you're able to do a lot more smaller group, there's just less logistical challenges than I think sometimes with the, with the in-person and they were actually able to get more done in some ways.
Did you have to change the content and the curriculum with the hybrid models? Less being delivered or in a different format due to constraints?
Well, it, it depends on the course, um, but, so I'll say like the AP courses are all following the AP curriculum because they have to prepare the kids for the exam. The Regents courses are all still following the Regents curriculum because they have to fa- prepare for the exam, but keep in mind that the way the AP, the Regents curriculum is created, um, they have sort of like, they would have considered sort of critical standards and then they have sort of ancillary standards. So the focus this year is on the critical standards, the ones that actually appear on the tests, right? When we used to, when we create our local curriculum, we cover things above and beyond what's on the Regents exam in many of our courses. So it's some of those things that are scaled back. Um, so it's not that they're missing out on any of the, the critical curriculum. They might be missing out on some of the ancillary things that we were able to do to enhance the curriculum in the past. Um, and again, it depends, you know, the plan, a lot of it depends on how you're able to adjust to each individual topic, right? Sometimes topics you think are going to go a certain pace and they end up not going that pace and you have to make adjustments regardless of whether it's hybrid or fully in-person. I mean, these are things teachers deal with every year because no s- two sets of students that are sitting in front of you are alike. I was never able to follow the same exact pacing academy, pacing calendar, you know, year A versus year B. Like, I always had to make adjustments.
Teachers are going less deep into curriculum in non-regents classes based on where we are pandemic-wise with the hybrid.
Not necessarily, I mean, in some ways, I think, I, with some teachers have, do with the, the courses don't have exams, they're actually in an ideal environment, right? Because they can make adjustments without having to worry about what's going to be on the test at the end of the year. So if you want to spend extra time and actually go deeper into a novel that the kids are really enjoying, you can do that, right? So I would say that for the elective courses, teachers actually have and have always had the flexibility to act, to go deeper, and that's what we're encouraging, right, go deeper into this material than trying to do more, right? Instead, instead of trying to rush through, say, six books, take five books and just do a really, really deep job of getting into them. So I, I think the elective courses are actually better situated.
I'm more worried about like the, the six through nine level with the curriculum and if the content is still the same in the hybrid model. Because it builds upon concepts in which they're going to get to the high school level and have those uh, Regents classes that they, they need to be able to perform well in. And I'm not sure like the iReady for math in, in the ELA can assess all of those critical skills in the middle school level. So I just want to make sure if we're changing the curriculum up because we have to, because of the way we can't deliver tests or quizzes or certain information, because I would imagine we would have to, it's a different learning model, that we're just ensuring that those concepts that need to be built upon for the high school years. And it's great, I, I would love that autonomy to go deeper into certain topics if we have that opportunity and the kids are interested. Um, just making sure that that's okay and that we're going to have the kids learn what they need to be learning in order to be successful because when there isn't a pandemic and everything's back to normal and the curriculum seems to be rebuilt to where it was, are those kids going to be able to perform at that level?
Yeah, they will, and, and that's why, again, we're, we're, we're using this, you know, again, the, the way the standards documents are crafted is they lay out sort of three layers of what to be, what's to be covered. Um, so, you know, we're really, really focusing on that top layer, which again, when you look in the standards, it's, you know, the breakdown's roughly like eighty-five percent, um, ten percent, five percent, you know, we're really, really honing in on that eighty-five percent. And then a- as you can get to the ten percent and the five percent, um, you're making those adjustments. Um, you know, in good years, you're still not getting to the, the full, you know, that, that, that sort of five percent that's really um, sort of above and beyond the standards that are required. Um, so I, I, I don't feel that we're going to be putting the kids at any kind of deficit where it's going to impact their ability to handle things in the future, for sure.
Yeah, as long as the teachers have this message and the supervisors are giving in the right direction, um, just to make sure that, you know, they're going in the direction we think that um, they need to, to go in. But this was a good message, so thank you for sharing.
Yeah, and that's, and I keep you, the, the way, I guess the word is prioritize curriculum, right? That's really what we spent a lot of time in the summer, making sure that we were prioritizing the curriculum to hit the critical standards so that students have the appropriate skills and knowledge to be able to move forward regardless of what setting we're in, for sure.
Great. Thank you, thank you for all your hard work.
Dave, how are we doing with um, finding ways for students to access extra support from their teachers after school?
Um, and speaking with teachers, actually, I, it seems that students are accessing them more than they traditionally had. Um, and that's because there's, a lot of teachers have built in this flexibility, right? It used to be, you know, if you couldn't get in to see your teacher from two fifteen to three o'clock, you know, the, you really didn't have an opportunity. Um, the number of teachers that are running office hours now from five to six, six to seven, I've heard some doing it as late as eight to nine o'clock at night. Um, and that hour gap or that hour time slot that they're um, utilizing, they're, they're using that whole hour. Um, I was talking to a teacher today that said she had students with her last night from eight to nine the entire time. Um, so I actually think this might be a mod, like, I think there are some good things that have come out of this, right? Like, giving students access to their teachers um, in a more flexible nature, I think has opened up the opportunity for more students to get help. Um, because it's not locked into that forty-five minute window at the end of the day, which isn't always convenient for students.
And do you know if that's also the case at the middle school?
I haven't heard as much um, at the middle school, I do know some teachers are running the sessions like that. Um, as a general rule, though, um, you know, historically, students at the high school have always been sort of more active and advocating for themselves and getting extra help. Um, middle school tends to be often either teacher or parent-driven. Um, but I have not heard any um, sort of complaints about lack of access at the middle school, put it that way.
You know, also, keep in mind the middle school has the home base option and now that, this year, that um, choir and band is very limited. Um, there's more kids in home base who can access teachers at that time, which in the past has, that's been more of a challenge, so I think that's presenting more opportunities for the kids to access teachers.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Dave, I wanted to ask again about the K five, not the full remote plan, which I a hundred percent believe will be better than what the spring looked like, but for kids in the K five that are out now, I'm wondering what the expectation is for teachers because, you know, the Department of Health rules are so strict and I assume that kids cumulatively are going to be missing more school with sick days than they normally would have. Um, and we don't have the option to sort of livestream and synchronously learn the way that we do in the upper grades. So I guess, what's the expectation for when a kid is out and, and how prepared a teacher should be to provide work for them from home?
Yeah, so um, I, I have heard of some teachers in grades three through five um, live streaming for kids. Um, it, it's a lot trickier for lower grades than that and it's certainly not the expectation three through five, some teachers just find it works for them. Um, but for the bulk of the teachers, I would say like the, the banker's box has kind of become their new best friend, right? Um, as, when students are out for long periods of time, they're, they're putting together um, all the materials in a box for the families to come pick up, um, and they're kind of checking in with the students. Um, not unlike what would have been done in prior years. Um, you know, as we move along through this, if we start to see more and more kids having to miss substantial amounts of time, we might have to revisit what that looks like. But for right now, sort of the banker box, for lack of a better phrase, seems to be working well.
I mean, I guess, I mean, that makes sense for an extended absence, I guess I'm just thinking, you know, I'll even use my own child as an example, my kids had to be tested, they were both home for three days. One of their teachers had all of their work pre-set out in their folders in the event that anyone had to be home and it was all ready to go and he could just take it out and do it and it was an, an incredible plan. Um, but I know that teachers are all over the place, so my kids were out for three days because somebody had one symptom that could have been COVID-related, right? So next week, the other one might have some symptom and then they're both out for three days again. I assume we're not the only family that's worried about cumulative sick days. You know, being out of school for two weeks at a time is one thing, but being out for two days and three days and three days and two days and it's, it's sort of the same difference when you're learning third grade math.
Right, and, and, and teachers are providing materials for students that are out even, you know, one to two days. Um, which again, isn't unlike past years, it's just more pronounced this year with the number of kids that it's happening to. Um, but any, any given year, it's not uncommon for students to be missing, you know, two days here, two days there, two days here, um, and we've always accommodated them. Um, the one thing, you know, grades three through five, the one benefit they do have now is with the Take Home Chromebook program, they still have access to all the materials, um, so that certainly helps. K two is always going to be a struggle, right? Because even if you're sending materials home, unless somebody has time to be dedicated to sit down and really work through things with the, the student, um, you know, to expect a, a kindergarten or first grader to be kind of independent and say, here's a bunch of materials, um, you know, I'll see you in like four hours, hopefully you can make through it all. Um, not really realistic expectations, so K two is going to be a struggle no matter what. Um, the best we can really do, I think, is just provide the materials. Um, and hopefully they have some support to help them navigate through it. Um, but if not, again, not unlike other years, right? Students miss two days here, three days there, when they come back, their teachers are certainly able to work with them on an individual basis and get them caught back up. Um, that's certainly not uncommon, especially K two.
Dave, but that hasn't always been um, something, that has been a strength of Bethlehem to get work for students when they're, they're out. I mean, some teachers are really good, like Willow says, but some teachers aren't. And I think being in a pandemic, just the more prepared we could be, not trying to put any more ownership on the teachers because I know, you know, it's a difficult time. But I do think that's something that I think Will makes a very valid point, that we should be more prepared with lesson plans because kids are out, because they have to get tested and they go two, three days in third grade when you're doing math or reading, you can get behind and it adds a lot of anxiety to kids who want to perform well. So the, whatever we can do to make that easier during this time, I, I hope that we can look to do that.
Agreed.
Along those lines, Dave, uh, what are we doing to prepare for um, getting materials to students, especially younger students uh, in the event of a full closure for an extended period of time? I know one of the things that was really frustrating this spring was the fact that we couldn't get books to kids and also um, proper like writing paper to the youngest students and worksheets for the youngest students. Are we preparing now so that we'll have a mechanism to get that material out to kids if it becomes a full closure?
Yeah, we are, we'll have pickup, the, um, you know, the, the challenge obviously is um, lead time, right? So um, it's, it's, it's unlikely that we're going to be told like on a, you know, on a Monday that, hey, by, by next Monday, be prepared because we're definitely going to be closing. It's going to probably be, you know, three o'clock on a Tuesday, we're closed tomorrow, right? Um, so there, there's probably going to be somewhat of a lag in terms of the amount of time it's going to take to get the materials out. But we do have a plan in place where K two students will be able to come up, this, um, pick up their, either iPad or Chromebook, um, pick up materials and things of that nature, so it might take a couple of days to get all the materials to kids. But there is a plan, um, grades three through five, there should be less of a need to send things home, um, knowing that the kids bring their Chromebooks back and forth every day. Um, if there are other materials, though, we can certainly, again, work out where um, there'd be pickup days for those materials as well. Um, it's just, the, the hardest part is sort of, it's going to be a last-minute thing in terms of when it's announced. So there's definitely going to be a one to two-day timeframe where people, ju- there just, there's no way they can already have the materials.
Okay, great, and along those same lines, um, you showed the schedule for the Virtual Learning Academy, I understand that was a third grade schedule. Um, but, and, and I think I've mentioned this before, I am concerned um, if we go fully remote for the schedule for the youngest K through two. Um, a schedule like that looks really difficult for me as a parent and for my youngest child. Um, so what would, would the schedule look like for K through two if we had to go fully remote? And what level of flexibility are we going to have for those kids who are going to really struggle with that?
So it's going to look the same, I mean, our, the Virtual Academy, K two is following that same model. Um, so, um, and it's, it is working. Um, no matter what model we use, K two kids are going to need some form of parental assistance. So in terms of flexibility, um, you know, there, there's going to be, I guess, times where students aren't able to be on for whatever reason. Um, and we, and that happens in the Virtual Academy too. Um, and you just kind of have to deal with those as they come up and work with the families to make sure that the students are able to access work to be able to do it another time. Um, but the schedules, it, it actually is working quite well, K two, um, in the Virtual Academy.
I, I, I understand that and I know kids get used to, get used to it and parents do what they can, but um, that does, it does look very daunting from, you know, just looking at it. And I know a lot of parents are going to ha- really struggle with that and kids are going to really struggle with that certainly at the beginning.
Right.
Um, and I would urge flexibility, you know, if a kid can't get to every meeting, I just, I don't under- I don't know how that is um, expected of, of, to be able to get a five-year-old onto five different meetings on and off. Um, seems to be asking a lot of parents.
Dave, we did talk about um, if we were to be in a shutdown, about having the teachers record some of the sessions, so that, that might be what addressing Meredith's concern, right? If that would be, if, that could offer some flexibility for families.
Right, so all of the large group sessions would be recorded so that families have Right, so all of the large group sessions would be recorded so that families have the opportunity to refer to those another time. The only piece that can't be replicated is the smaller pod work. Um, because again, that's gonna be more individualized depending on which the students are in that pod, working with a teacher. But there's also the times where, you know, it's independent work, if, if that time doesn't work, obviously you can do independent work at another time. Um, so even though it's kind of a structured schedule, there are pieces where the students are working on their own, um, which doesn't require logging back into the system necessarily. Um, there's only, let's see, probably about five times a day, six times a day where they actually have to be on, um, with their teacher or their peers. And special will be running the same as, they're gonna follow the same exact special schedule they're following now so that our special area teachers, it, it's just seamless.
And Meredith, to your point, I think, you know, Dave and I have talked about this, we've talked about it with the teachers, we recognize that, you know, should we find ourselves in a, a closure, there, obviously that means there's larger issues going on in the community and recognizing that families are gonna be in very different scenarios. So obviously, we know that we'll need to be flexible in that. Um, we need to offer, you know, this is kind of our instructional model, but if we record certain things, so maybe it doesn't work at that time, but you could go back in later on, or if a family just says, you know, this just isn't working for me, you know, trying to find some solutions with families. So we, we know that if we find ourselves in closure, there's gonna be a lot of, um, there's gonna be a lot of challenges and issues that we have to work together on. So, um, I don't think we can say this is our model, everyone needs to follow it exactly, because, you know, we weren't a pandemic, right? Um, every day things change, so I think we, everyone understands that um, there will be times that there's gonna have to be flexibility and exceptions made.
And that points really to why it was so important for us to get K six in every day right now. Um, you can see the, the districts that are running hybrid models with their younger students, um, it's really, it's a real, real challenge for the families to try to navigate work schedules and who's gonna be home with the kids, um. So hopefully, again, our priority, I think, will always be to keep K six in, um, as much as possible, um, because of those concerns as well.
Okay, thank you both.
And one last thing I do wanna mention is on, um, on Friday, um, you know, our building principals are gonna be sending out sort of just a quick little, um, message that shares what the schedule could look like should we, you know, end up in a closure. And I just wanna assure everybody, this is just so that people are aware that we have a plan, there, there is no plan to close things down. So I know, you know, it's one of those things like, do we send it out, don't we? But we decided we're going to send it out, we want everyone to know, we do have a plan, and this is what the plan's gonna look like. But we don't have an actual plan to close, it's just we have a plan if we close. So hopefully people hear that and don't panic when they see, um, what the plan looks like.
Oh, we're gonna panic, don't worry.
I know.
I do think it makes sense to share it. I would put right up on the top and maybe repeat it throughout the document several times.
Can I run the, this is a test and have the, the actually beep when, when people open their email?
There you go.
It might work.
Dave, could I ask you one last question? Is it, is it possible at the K through six level with testing to have any material that's delivered in the class, like put online? Because if that was done, it would alleviate a lot of like, you know, picking up stuff if kids were out, if the materials are already online for each classroom. I know it's difficult for each teacher to do that, but I mean, it is a suggestion that might alleviate a lot of work with the potential for kids to be in and out with varying testing, and especially now with the holidays and family coming and quarantining and all that good stuff, it, you know, might go a long way.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think three through five already does largely put a lot of the stuff in Google Classroom. Um, K two uses a seesaw, um, but again, one of the challenges there, you know, K two kids really need hands-on, they need paper, they need, it's so, um,
Well, right, but paper can be put online, so a parent can print it off, and if they have the time and the ability to work with their kids.
That. I just know that last year, a lot of the things we put online, parents requested, like, please stop putting them online, we'd rather you print them for us, because I only have so much ink at home. So there is a definite.
Yeah, there is that issue, but it, it, it might alleviate a little bit of that.
I hear you, I hear you.
Yeah, I second Christine's suggestion, because I think one of the, um, the differences, which, I mean, obviously there's so many, but you've got a lot of kids that are at home who feel perfectly fine. You don't, because they're just waiting for a test to come back. So as opposed to in a normal year, you would have somebody who's home for a few days because they're sick, so you don't want them actually having to do work while they're home, because they should be recovering from their illness and then making it up when they get back to school. But now we have the situation where you've got kids that are totally fine, and they just have to hang out at home for however long until the test comes back.
Right. It's a good point.
Any other questions for Dave?
Nope.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up on the agenda is our recognition of public comment. Uh, we only had one comment that came in for this meeting, um, from Luis Garcia. And it was, um, with respect to the Student Health Services Policy, um, I think that is on the agenda, um, tonight. It, there's a link in the, um, in the comment that he sent in. And the comment is that the document uses terms like physician, healthcare provider, medical provider, and physician. Would it be possible to use just one term, for example, medical provider, that encompasses all in the profession? This would make it easier and less confusing. Also, school physician is mentioned in the document, do we have one? And so with respect to that, yes, we do have a school physician. Um, and the, um, I think the policy committee could certainly take a look at the, um, whether it would make sense to, um, to change the, um, the language with respect to the, how we're referring to providers if it's inconsistent. Uh, next on the agenda are action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through three.
Show moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries? B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action item, one.
Show moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carries? Item C, support personnel action items. Uh, we are removing item three from tonight's agenda. And it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one, two, four, and five.
Show moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries? D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through three.
Show moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries? Uh, future meetings and events, um, the board calendar, our next regular board meeting, um, is scheduled for Wednesday, December second at seven o'clock, anticipating an executive session at six. Uh, we have a policy committee meeting scheduled for Monday, December seventh at six o'clock. Um, and our next meeting after that is on Wednesday, December sixteenth. We have a regular board meeting, um, starting at seven, anticipating an executive session, um, at six. Seeing no need to go back into an executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Show moved.
Okay, okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Good evening, everyone.